I'll come to order. Is Councilman Wisworth available for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wisworth.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, City Treasurer, City Attorney, and those who have joined this meeting. This is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty. This meeting is being held in accordance with Public Act two-two A, Sections three A, subsection two, which allows the meeting of a public body to be conducted electronically in a manner that permits two-way communication, so that members of the public body can hear and be heard by other members of the public body, and so that public participants can hear members of the public body and can be heard by members of the public body and other participants during a public comment period. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join this meeting by phone, call six-four-six-five-five-eight-eight-six-five-six. When prompted, enter the meeting ID number eight-three-two-two-six-eight-three-six-six-nine-eight, followed by the pound sign. And again, if you've joined this meeting online from the Zoom meeting app, click on the URL link and enter the meeting ID when prompted. Again, the meeting ID number is eight-three-two-two-six-eight-three-six-six-nine-eight. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address City Council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of public comment. Mr. Chair, roll call was taken at our special meetings that were held at, that was held at six-thirty, and we do have a quorum for tonight's regular council meeting.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'm asking if Council would, I'd like to submit an amended agenda this evening, and that is adding Agenda Item six A under the Clerk's Report. So the amended agenda is as follows. Number one, Agenda. Number two, Minutes. Number three, Petitioner. Number four, Chairperson's Report. Five, Mayor's Report. Six, Clerk's Report. Seven, Treasurer's Report. Eight, Public Comment. Nine, Unfinished Business. Ten, New Business. Eleven, Warrant. Twelve, Communication. And number thirteen is Adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the amended agenda as presented by Council.
I'll move to accept the amended agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to accept the amended agenda as presented. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
You're muted.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Number two are Minutes for approval of the Minutes from the regular meeting held on November fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the amendments of October the fifth of two thousand and twenty.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for approval of the Minutes from our regular meeting held on November the fifth, two thousand and twenty. Mr. Wisworth? Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
There are no petitioners this evening on the agenda. Number four is the Chairperson's Report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We had a couple of meetings in the closed session, one was six-thirty, and we had a closed session at six-forty-five, closed session to discuss pending litigations. At this time, Chairperson has nothing to report.
Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, to accept the Chairperson's Report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Oh, that was Ms. Abdo that seconded.
Oh, this boy, y'all sounded alike here. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved, thank you.
Number five is the Mayor's Report.
Good evening, City Council, Treasurer Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and those in the audience. This Wednesday is Veterans Day, so the quote kind of ties in with us. May we think of freedom not as the right to do as we please, but as the opportunity to do what's right. And with that, we couldn't have these opportunities and these freedoms without the men and women who have served and are serving in all the branches of the military. So if you get a chance this week, if it's Wednesday or not, you know, I know, Mr. Wisworth, you served, thank you. Just take a chance to reach across your fence and tell a neighbor who is serving or has a family member, that's what makes our country great. So remember that this week. I wanted to turn it over to Steve Hitchcock for a couple of comments, and then I have some action items tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Counsel. I addressed with Counsel in a closed session before this meeting the concerns raised by Mrs. Williams at the last meeting of the Council, and we discussed that in a closed session concluded before this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Counsel, for my action items, what I have, the first one up tonight is a recommendation from Darren Shelby, Captain Darren Shelby and Gary Harris. The request is to concur with the administration and consent to a piggyback MDL contract. The number's listed there, and it's for a purchase of one two thousand and twenty-one Ford Explorer with options and upfitting with lights and sirens. Total cost of that is thirty-one thousand, five thirty-nine, and zero cents. That's from Gornow Ford. The funds have been verified and available out of the federal forfeiture outlay fund that's listed.
Go ahead, Mr. Wisworth.
I'm so moved to approve the contract to purchase the vehicle.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Webb, to purchase one of the two thousand and twenty-one Ford Explorers. Any discussion? Here is no discussion. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Counsel. The next item is a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici, our Director of Public Works, and Steve Hitchcock, our City Attorney. This wants to concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution and guidelines for the City of Romulus Road System Assessment Management Plan and Analysis.
Concur with the administration and adopt the attached resolution and guidelines for the City of Romulus Road System Assessment Management Plan and Analysis?
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, and this is to, from City of Romulus Road System Assessment Management Plan and Analysis. Any discussion?
Yeah, through the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally.
And I think Roberto's on here, and I talked with Roberto earlier. Roberto, again, and I want to reiterate from our conversation earlier, this is an awesome document. I'm talking about the detail. I mean, it was so crystal clear what you do in your department. It was just ridiculous, ridiculous, crazy, great. So thank you for the level of detail you provided in this document. It was, it was an easy read, I mean, and I understood everything clearly how you guys are. I mean, it was just a beautiful document. So thank you, Roberto, for the hard work y'all put into this, and yeah, it was a great document. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Any discussion? Roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth? Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Counsel. The next action item, there's actually two separate motions on. This is a recommendation from Maria Ferris, Finance Director, and Steve Hitchcock, our Legal Counsel. Steve worked really hard in getting these rewritten. The first one is a request to concur with the administration and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to enter into the attached amended cell tower lease agreement. And that's for a tower located at two-five-seven-seven-seven Eureka Road.
Chair, I'll make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize Mayor and Clerk to enter into the attached amended cell tower lease agreement for the tower located at two-five-seven-seven-seven Eureka Road. Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally.
Got discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, to discuss, to concur with the administration and authorize Mayor and Clerk to enter into the attached amended cell tower lease agreement for the tower located at two-five-seven-seven-seven Eureka Road. Discussion, Mr. Wisworth?
Number one, I believe that the, I believe that the address on Eureka is improper because the address is started at twenty-seven thousand coming into Romulus, unless this tower is in the city of Taylor. I'm sure that was the address. Do you show anything different, Steve? I mean, that's what I show.
No, I don't, but it is in Romulus.
Absolutely in Romulus. The address should be, because the address is started at twenty-seven thousand, four hundred, going west of Inkster Road.
Okay, we'll get that corrected.
Okay, and before we get to the other one, that's, it says five-seven, it probably should be three-seven, because that's the end of the addresses on the west side.
Okay.
I don't mean to be picky, you know, but those are the facts.
Yeah, Mr. Wisworth.
Yeah?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Abdo.
I don't think we should vote on these tonight, then, until we have the correct address, because this is a legal document.
What do we want to do?
Any discussions from other council on that?
I have no problem voting on this, as long as we say that the address is twenty-seven thousand.
On the legal descriptions on the leases, they don't even cite the address. They just have the legal descriptions.
Property, right description.
Of course, they cite and the area of the, of the lease.
We can assure you that the legal description is accurate in the. I'm saying it is, Mayor, I'm just saying that the address is incorrect, I believe.
And through the Chair, if I may, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Wisworth. I was going to mention that myself, but first of all, this is not a building. It's, it's, it's just a piece of property, and our clerk could, right now, amend that and put the, you know, get the correct address.
I agree.
It's not like they're going anywhere. I mean, it's a, it's, it's a tower out there on a piece of property.
And if you don't mind, I can clarify, the parcel number is eight-zero-dash-one-four-two-dash-nine-nine-dash-zero-zero-four-dash-seven-hundred for the first one.
Okay. Any other discussion from Council? So, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams? Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
No.
Again, Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams? Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Counsel. Take the same approach on the next one. The second one is the Northline Road Tower, and the request is to concur with the administration and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to enter into the attached amended cell tower lease for the Northline property, and that would be the code that's listed on the lease number, striking the address.
Through the Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Webb?
I'll make that motion to concur with the administration and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to enter into the amended cell tower lease agreement.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to concur with the administration and authorize the Mayor and Clerk to enter into the attached amended cell tower agreement. Any discussion? Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Oh, did you have any discussion, I'm sorry?
No.
Okay, Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams? Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Williams, is she muted, or? Anybody?
Let's see, she is still on, but her video is off, so I'm not sure.
Okay.
An audi, yeah, an audio. So we're not certain.
All right.
Chairman, that concludes my report for tonight.
Okay, Chair votes yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Number six is the Clerk's Report, six A one. It's an amendment of the approved minutes from September eighth and September twenty-ninth, closed session, special meeting. In response to an email received by Charles Blackwell that the special meeting, closed session, held on September eighth and September twenty-eighth, respectively, had an error that did not comply with the Open Meetings Act. MCL fifteen point two-six-seven subsection one states that a two-thirds roll call vote of members elected or appointed and serving is required to call a closed session, except for the closed sessions permitted under section eight A, B, C, G, I, and J. The roll call vote and the purpose or purposes for calling the closed session shall be entered into the minutes of the meeting at which the vote is taken. Therefore, Counsel, I am requesting approval of the attached amended minutes for the special meetings, closed session meetings that were held on September eighth and September twenty-eighth. And again, those special meeting minutes, they do include the reason for the special meeting. A motion would be in order by Councilmember.
I'll make that motion. Madam Clerk, to accept your minutes as read.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for the attached minutes read by our clerk. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Counsel. Before I close, last week, I'd gone down a list of departments and individuals to thank for their assistance and support with the November third election, and there was a department that I, that I neglected to mention, and it would totally be remiss of me if I didn't mention them, because they played a very integral part with our elections, and that is our IT department. Steve Dudak and his team, they're, I can't say enough of just how supportive and how instrumental they are in helping our elections. There's a lot of technology now that's involved with voting, our voting machines and elections, and so they played a big part, and they play a big part and played a big role in making sure that our equipment and things were running efficiently. And I have to mention that Mr. Dudak hung in there with us until five-thirty in the morning, until all of those results and things were transmitted to the county. So to Steve Dudak and his team in the IT department, thank you very much. And with that, that concludes the Clerk's Report. Number seven, yes, number seven is the Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, Counsel, Mayor, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and listening audience. I just want to remind everyone that the Treasurer's Office is working on preparing for the upcoming winter tax bills, and those will be mailed out, and customers, residents, should expect those on December first. Of course, if you have any questions, or for some reason you don't get your bill, give us a call at seven-three-four-nine-four-two-seven-five-eight-zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And that is it under my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight is public comment, and this is a portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address City Council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. Use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. Tap the microphone icon to mute or unmute yourself. If you've dialed in from a touchstone phone, press the star nine from your phone. Press star six from your phone, or the microphone icon from the meeting app to unmute. After you've been acknowledged, you will have three minutes to speak. Additional time will be upon approval of the Chairperson. And again, citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. And, Mr. Chair, I do not see any hands raised or anyone indicating that they wish to speak at this time. I'm just going to take one more peek at this to peruse through, and it looks like no one has requested to speak.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we'll close that out.
Number nine is unfinished business. Number ten is new business. Number eleven is warrant. So eleven A for approval is warrant twenty-dash-twenty-one for checks presented in the amount of one million, thirty-two, I'm sorry, thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seven cents.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we pay warrant twenty-dash-twenty-one in the following amounts. General Fund, one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Major Street Fund, one hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-one cents. Local Street Fund, forty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-one cents. Public Safety Fund, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. Cable TV, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents. Mayorman Road Special Assessment, eleven thousand, two hundred and five dollars and fifty-three cents. Oakwood Thad, twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. Garbage and Rubbish Collection Fund, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Michigan Indigent Defense Fund, thirty thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. Nine-Eleven Service Fund, one thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Library Fund, eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. DDA, two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-nine cents. Tifa District Two, four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. Binding Road Construction, Tifa, eleven thousand, four hundred and two dollars and thirty-eight cents. Water and Sewer Fund, five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. Motor Vehicle, nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. Technology Services, two thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. Retiring Insurance Benefits, four thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. Revolving Fund, ten thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Current Tax, five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. Payroll Fund, one hundred and eighty dollars and forty-eight cents. Total All Funds, one million, thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seven cents.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number twenty-dash-twenty-one for one million, thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and seven cents. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Warrant number twenty-dash-twenty-one will be paid.
Chair, I'd also like to make a motion that we pay warrant twenty-dash-twenty-one E in the following amounts, thirty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. This is the warrant for the expenses for the election.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, to pay warrant number twenty-dash-twenty-one E for thirty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, warrant number twenty-dash-twenty-one E will be paid.
Number twelve is communication. Through the Chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
Yes, first of all, I just want to say, thank you, Steve Hitchcock, for addressing our closed session discussion. I need to add a couple of comments from my own records. We were addressed with a question at a Thursday meeting to Councilwoman Williams, and I thank you, Councilwoman Williams, for calling me clarifying what you were looking for on that meeting on Thursday. But since it was brought up, just for the record, and please forgive me, everybody, if I fail to remember events that happened two years ago. I had no document of reference at that time, so, you know, I was a little caught off guard because I didn't have any document of reference. But when I went back and pulled up the minutes of that evening, of that July twenty-eighteen meeting, I saw that I was excused from that meeting. I was out of town along with my colleague Kathy Abdo. We were not in attendance of that July twenty-eighteen meeting. And as I kept looking at that, I remembered that, refreshing my memory, because now things are coming back to me, I was not in attendance of that meeting. And it's not, it's very few meetings I do not attend. I was on a family trip with my family. The last actually family trip, that included my dad. And as you all know, I lost my dad the following year, and that was my last family trip I had that included my dad. So that's why I wasn't in attendance of that meeting. So I just wanted to put that out for the record, I was not there for the meeting. I was with my family, my last family trip with my dad before he passed the following year. And I just want that noted for the record, because it was brought up in a public setting. I wanted to put that out in the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have a request to speak from Councilwoman Roscoe.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I want to announce that there will not be a Planning Commission meeting on Monday, which is November sixteenth. We did not have any petitioners coming in front of the Planning Commission, so we had nothing to meet in regards to. So just for your information out there, there's no Planning Commission meeting on November sixteenth. Also, Wednesday is Veterans Day, and I would just like to say a great big thank you to all our veterans out there who are serving, you know, the community in a lot of different other ways. And currently, they are doing a toy drive, the Toys for Tots. Everybody has seen those boxes around in different locations. We have two locations here in Romulus, and they'll be collecting new toys unwrapped through December tenth, and you can drop them off if you would like to help donate for the kids at the Veterans Post in nine-five-six-eight-eight, which is our veterans on Hannon and Hen River Drive. And also, you can drop them off at the Bowling Alley, at Walter's Bar and Bowling Alley, right at Five Points there. And, you know, I know the kids all appreciate all the help we give them, you know, during the holidays and any other time of year. But mainly, I just want to put a big thank you out there to veterans. I have members of my family who have served, and. and, uh, without them, we would not be doing what we're doing right now, right here. And again, um, on Wednesday, um, all offices are closed, the banks are closed, the city's closed, I believe. And, um, so just think of that, and remember why we have the freedom we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more communication from council?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would just like to remind the residents that tomorrow, Forgotten Harvest will be at the high school from twelve to three. The only thing is required is your name, your zip code, and your address, and they will, uh, stock your trunk. Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no more communication from council, number thirteen is adjournment.
So moved.
Sorry.
Who's, who supported that?
Abdo.
Who?
Ms. Abdo.
Oh, okay, Ms. Abdo. Uh, it's been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for adjournment. Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned, thank you.